Good night, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome. And as we start, well, first of all, we start every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Oney?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have some reportable action out of closed session. It was case number 201213096. Mr. Carl made the motion, and it was seconded by Mr. Hanol. The vote was unanimous. We'll move on to any statements of abstention. And are there any adjustments to the agenda? Director Gonzalez?
I would like to pull E5.
E5? Oh, yes, and we need to remove F5. F5. F5 is, the topic is, a discussion on board committees. And Director Pugh is out of town on National School Board, at a National School Board conference. And he asked that this be held for a later date so that he could participate. Are there any board member requests for information?
Yes.
Director Close?
We talked a while ago about getting statistics from the junior college regarding entrance exam testing from both our students in comparable schools and districts. And so I just wanted to check in on that.
Superintendent Shields, you want to say something?
We have a request into the JC, and we will be working with them to get that data.
Thank you. There are no minutes to approve tonight. There are no Student of the Month awards. We do have public, we're now on public comments on items not on the agenda. The public is invited to address the board regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. Under the law, the board is not allowed to take action on matters that are not on the agenda. And we have two speaker cards. Najine Sheriot and Michelle Gervais.
Thank you, Steve. Happy New Year. My name is Michelle Gervais. I'm here representing the Santa Rosa French American Charter School. I'm president of the foundation, which is the Association of Parents. We have about 420 students now. A lot of want-to-be parents and community supporters. Many, hundreds of them wanted to come tonight. So, I hope you don't mind that we've asked them not to. And I'm here to synthesize comments and a lot of energy around an idea that we think is exciting and probably might sound familiar. First, the bigger picture. Congratulations on the bond and the success of that. And also on the master planning that you're engaging in. Many, you may hear, are starting to talk about an international middle school, models of which exist around the country, that synthesize and weave together language immersion programs into an international academy of sorts. You have three tracks that all will be ready in four and a half years, which sounds far away, but isn't more than tomorrow when you think about plans and the DSA and approvals and, you know, campus planning. Those three are the Spanish Language School, the French Language School, and an English track. We could show you lots of examples of those and how they grow incrementally. But maybe we might be a beginning of that. What feels like kind of a roadblock for our school is kind of a stepping stone to that vision if it has appeal. And so I come about the middle school component of the French American Charter School, which is not really meeting the needs as defined in the charter. In our charter, middle school activities are age-appropriate, and our elementary campus doesn't really accommodate that. And you can see in our attendance that that's not been our strong suit as the past couple of years, our middle school students are transferring out to other schools, often not in the district. And that's a concern for them now. There are pioneering families. We feel a sense of responsibility to fulfill the charter that they bravely came along to engage in. But we also see great promise. We are a growing school. We had 100 new students, net new students this year, 150 new students. We have four full kindergartens. We have a full TK. We've handed out more enrollment applications than we have room for if we maintain that pace next year. And we can see incrementally a great opportunity and a good investment. We hope we've been that so far, and we'd like to continue with that. But we would like to see if, soon, like maybe at the next meeting, we could explore the idea of what to do next for our middle school students. We've worked very well, we think, with your staff. We're really pleased with them. We've talked about some options in the district and outside the district that are really ready-made for about five classrooms or more that we would see needing, starting in this fall, to accommodate sixth through eighth grade, the common span for an international middle school track. We have more people knocking on our doors than we can answer in terms of hoping to engage in that international approach with other language tracks, whether or not they're ready for one as an immersion. But so an English language track, starting now with a French language and readying for the Spanish language, soon would be our ideal start for this next year. Short of that, we know we will lose many more students. We know that the eighth grade we could accommodate per the charter will not be desirable. We know that many of our current sixth graders will not be coming back for seventh grade. They've already identified their second choice or third choice if they don't have a proper middle school, age-appropriate curriculum and programming. And so we'd like to stop that. And I think that we all agree that the vision is a good one. It's what you approved in the charter. And our school is really your school. And so we're looking for ways to satisfy that now and build the momentum and get those stepping stones in place. It's a big decision, but our accreditation has drawn people from other districts, from other counties. And so we think we could do that together. We want to catch the wave. Thank you.
Thank you. Najine? You mean you won't speak at all?
I think you got the point.
I think we got it.
I think you got it.
You were pretty clear.
Hello, hello. Sorry, I didn't want to be polite. Happy New Year to everybody. We really do believe that is a business proposal that has proven that we are able to get students from outside of the district. We still believe we can. There's a lot of interest in coming to our school. We haven't even marketed the idea of the international middle school, just "on pass on," just saying it to people. So we would really urge, if it could be possible, by February for us to be on the agenda. And some decision to be made so we can let our parents know and the prospective parents that are coming from other districts and other towns to know as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for being so specific. That's helpful. Okay, they, we have no parent organization reports tonight. Employee association reports. We'll start with Amy Stern, president of SRTA.
Good evening, everyone. As you may or may not know, we did have a bargaining session today, and we were really very disconcertingly close to going to impasse. SRTA gave a comprehensive offer of 5% for both salary and a benefits package. Your attorney asked us for a breakdown of the proposal. We gave a very well-thought-out proposal that we feel is quite reasonable and sustainable for both salary and medical benefits. The 2% increase that we received from the Board of Education last year was the first increase we received since the 2007-2008 school year. Our proposal is consistent with the average increase across Sonoma County. We assert that the district administration can use some of the supplemental grant money to attract and retain highly qualified administrators and staff. And by doing that, we can also begin to restore district contributions to medical benefits package. We are really hopeful that when we meet again on the 18th of February, that we can reach an agreement and that it will not be necessary for us to go to impasse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Is Tammy Afonso here? No. And Chris Viero? No. Okay. The next up is superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Similarly, I'd like to speak to the LCAP process as well. We had, on Saturday, a sun stakeholders unity meeting regarding the LCAP. We will have, we had another this week, open to staff right after school. And in both, we had much less attendance than we'd really like to see. It's so critical that everybody get involved and everybody come share their voice on these important decisions, from staff to parents to other community members who don't have even children in the school because these decisions affect us all. And so those dates are available on our website. We will continue to publicize them as much as we can, get to the radio, do everything we can to get people there. If you have ideas about times, locations, that are better, we certainly are open to those. We're open to meeting where we need to meet, at the time we need to meet. One of the things we'll be doing is getting kind of a turnkey presentation ready to go to ELAC meetings, to SSC meetings, so we can collect people, and it won't be another separate meeting. But this is a very important topic, and everybody's voice really is important. In particular, the students for who the supplemental and concentration dollars have been generated for. And as the state requires, low-income English learner and foster youth, it really is the families and students and community members who speak and work with them that we really need to hear at these meetings. These dollars were generated for their specific use and for improvement around services that they receive. So please, we encourage families and students and community members who voice that experience to please come to the meetings. Please take part in this. Please help us make sure that these investments really are in the best interest of the children that we are here to serve. Thank you.
Tonight, I'd like to send our thoughts and prayers out to the family of Karen Camilli. She worked for the district for 32 years, mostly as a sixth-grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary School. Her family is working with her former school to raise funds for art education, including a mural in her name at Lincoln. And in lieu of flowers, the family is asking that checks be sent to Lincoln Elementary School in memory of Karen. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of Karen's passing. And we thank her for her long-term service to our district and her students, who she obviously loved very much. Move on now to board committee reports. And I think the only board committee reports that we, that I owe you on are the TADCOM. So, there are three meetings that I need to report on. I'll try to make this quick. First one goes back to the December meeting, where we talked about school climate, restorative justice, and discipline. At this meeting, we decided that we talked about needing to start thinking about how we are utilizing intervention before suspension. People expressed the desire that this be consistent across the district. We are trying to get to a place of uniformity in that area. Need to continue to work on tier-one level interventions and make sure everybody understands how that works to assure the practices are consistent for all students. And then, there were questions about whether or not the district will continue implementing and training for the restorative practices program. And the answer is yes. There are a number of spring training scheduled for further, to further support teachers and administrators. The work of restorative practices has been that of the administrators to date. That would be the principals. They're the ones who've been actually trained at each site as they approach discipline in regards to suspension expulsion matters. However, many teachers and support staff have embraced the philosophy of restorative practices and have begun using various aspects, such as circles in their classrooms, as a way to build community, et cetera. Really good example of that is Comstock. Am I correct, Ms. Shanklin?
You are so correct.
Thank you. The next thing we spoke about was SSTs, the process. A discussion was held regarding the lack of consistency of the SST process across the district. The challenges that new teachers face. And interventions to try, or even, I'm sorry, the challenge for new teachers to know what early interventions to try and even when and who to refer to can be quite overwhelming. So, again, this speaks to a uniformity of process and like the necessity of orientation. The other thing that came around this was that often there is not follow-through from families. And the question was posed then, what can we do to support that engagement and provide the needed follow-up to ensure student success? And I think the answer was communication, communication, communication. We talked about diagnostic tools for SSTs. Various literacy and mathematics diagnostic tools have just begun being piloted at seven different schools across the district, K-12. To date, various tools have been shared, and teachers have given input at a number of teacher leadership committees, such as the Common Core Network, Elementary Curriculum Collaborative, department chair meetings, monthly intervention meetings, et cetera. The goal is to have diagnostic tools for literacy and mathematics by late spring. Behavioral tools. A discussion was then held regarding the need for behavioral diagnostics as well. It was explained that this is something that is also being worked on as part of the multi-tier student support framework for student engagement. The district would like to begin assessing incoming seventh graders at an earlier date than ever before in hopes of further remedying this challenge. Teachers express their support of this effort. The goal is to have behavioral diagnostic tools in place by the fall of 2015. Secondary teachers stress the importance and recommendation of looking at tools that also assist in assessing cognitive processes as well. That was December, January. We talked about adequate staffing and supervision. Discuss concerns of parents and teachers regarding returning students that have, returning students from expulsion, who have a history of violent behavior and their concern for the safety of staff and students. Discussion followed regarding the process of bringing students back to class who have behavioral issues. Overriding theme was, we need to develop a protocol with the police and probation to come up with a system for reentry for these students so that the students are slowly eased back into, or transition from probation situation back into the classroom. There was deliberation about a procedure for student reentry. Is there something that can be done district-wide? Ideas need to be explored. We need to be cognizant of putting kids back into regular-sized classroom when they might be used to something much smaller. And the last item we talked about was technology. Training is, of course, a concern, something we're working on. I think that this is something that our bond money will be addressing in terms of actual equipment and then the training of teachers. But we have so much catch-up work to do in this area. It's almost hard to know where to begin. And that's where teachers brought this to this committee. It was like, what are we supposed to be doing? When do we get our, when are we going? How do we assess what we need? Who is going to be doing that assessment? And so a lot of these are open-ended questions for us at this committee level. But it gives the administration and the teachers an opportunity to exchange thoughts and ideas and information as to what already is going on. Not everybody is always on the same page on the same day. So, we try to get to that spot on the day of TADCOM. After that, I don't know, but we do try. So, those are my reports from the TADCOM committee. And there are no other committee reports that I know of, correct? So that means we move on to board member reports that are limited to two minutes each. And Director Kristoff, would you like to begin?
Surely. It has been a while since we've given board reports, and I have actually kind of winnowed this down a little bit. The last, I just want to mention that I've had an opportunity to visit three very, very lovely elementary schools, Lincoln, Burbank, and Brook Hill in the last three and a half or four weeks. And I'm always impressed at the quality of questions I get and the enthusiasm each of these faculty shows for their schools. And, you know, this is, you know, there's some unusual circumstances out there. But there was a great article in the paper this weekend about volunteerism in our community. And all these schools are cooperating with various groups. And I mean, it's very impressive. I'm very thankful that we have such good people that staff these schools. I also visited Santa Rosa High School briefly as well and had a nice lunchtime conversation with teachers there. I attended, along with Director Close, Director Pugh, Director Jay, and myself, went to the board appreciation dinner put on by the county for people who have served on school boards throughout the county. And then some of the service time was amazing, 28 years, I believe, in one case. And our superintendent was there too as well. And so it's just, it's a labor of love, you know. And a lot of these districts are, you know, there's just, it's just a non-paid position, of course, but just something that people do. And they feel that connection to schools and to education. And I've got to remember that there are a lot of people out there doing the same kind of things that we are too. And I appreciated the county putting that on and meeting a lot of new people. Also, I attended the first meeting of the county committee on, Sonoma County Committee on District, School District Reorganization on Monday night. And it is very interesting. There are going to be some pretty big issues coming up that we'll be looking at. And I know a lot of people have been talking about redistricting the junior college. And that was a very important topic that we began. And this conversation will continue. And the public is welcome to come and join us in those meetings. And I'll keep the board informed as to what's going on there. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Director Gonzalez?
I had the opportunity to attend a couple of, and I can't remember, I forgot to write my notes down, but I had the opportunity to attend a couple of productions with Art Quest at Santa Rosa High School. And I'm always amazed and wowed by the talent that is there. I've been to ELAC, DLEC meetings. And the last DLEC meeting, one of the things that came up that is on our agenda was the last school closing we had, the emergency. And I got quite an earful of that, being the only board member there. But it was interesting, and Latino service providers, again, came out and gave a good report.
Thank you. Director Hanol?
Thank you. This month, in fact, today, I went out to visit Ridgeway Continuation School. Visited with the principal, Rob Hewick. And then I had lunch with the staff and spent some time afterwards with teachers who are on prep period. And the campus looks beautiful. There's artwork going up. They, the students are putting their art on these big plywood mounts, and they go around the campus. It really looks great, and it's reducing the graffiti. I also had, went out to Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School and had a conversation with Anna Williams about differentiated curriculum and how to serve the gifted. And it was a very invigorating conversation. And I heard more about the needs at their school, which we'll be talking about tonight. But definitely, we need to spread the word on the good news of the charter school and pass this instruction on to more students. Went to the school board conference in December. I went to one IDU 26-2 meeting. I also had a wonderful morning at JX Wilson. And I really looked at their reading program, which is really pretty much of an amazing program. I won't have time to talk to you here about it because it's pretty complex. But it's really a good example of how to reach many students and also to differentiate some instruction. I went to a fundraiser for Light the Lander, which provides free tickets to some of our teachers in appreciation for the dedicated work they do. I also went to the Vintage Inn, where I had dinner with the American Medical Association. And that was quite a big attendance there. And I was able to present Dr. Joe Clendenin's award for special service, or social service. And I visited Hidden Valley a little bit before that. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Carl?
Thank you. I appreciate it. President J, you mentioned Karen from Lincoln. I was going to make a comment about that. My mom actually taught with her and always had very positive things to say about her. So, my best to their family. I had an opportunity also with Director Kristoff to attend a CTA dinner for newly-elected board members. And we were there with Amy, but also a number of folks from CTA at various levels and a lot of other trustees. So it was an opportunity to talk about lots of things that are going on, not just within our district, but the district as a whole. It was a good evening and a good chance to reconnect with a number of folks, which I much appreciate.
Thank you. Director Close?
Okay. Well, I'm going to try to pick some of the highlights. I went to Maria Carrillo last week to the Martin Luther King Presentations. And it was a pretty, I think the superintendent talked about it last time. It was a pretty amazing program where these students, the theme was about the question of what we're doing for others. And they talked a lot about their experiences at school and in our community, about recognizing the east-west divide, about problems with experience with student suicide and other forms of students hurting themselves, about homelessness and about lots of challenges that they face. And it was really very moving and impressive. And I wanted to just congratulate them. And the teacher who I think heads that, Bridgette Menzel, was just really, a very moving performance. I got to talk to a avid class at 7:00 in the morning at LC Allen. And that was just really fun. And we just talked about kind of decisions and how I made my decisions about where to go to school and what kind of jobs to take and stuff. And it was fun to be able to sit with a small group of students and hear what was important to them, get their questions. And I give them some ideas on good decisions and bad decisions and how to approach things like that. I was at the board recognition dinner last week with the Directors Pugh and Kristoff and President Jay. And President Jay and I had the unique experience of sitting and talking to a board member who serves us a district of 12 students and with one teacher. And it was very interesting, enlightening. It sounded fun, except for during the stormy season, when it sounded very difficult. Much more difficult than even our stormy season. I went and visited a Montgomery High School Theory of Knowledge class. And that was absolutely amazing to hear these students talk about current events and to hear how smart they were and how well they could have robust debates about contentious issues. I guess that is my report.
Thank you. Student board member, Ms. Cynthia?
Okay. Normally, we would then have the CSBA, NSBA report, but as I said, Director Pugh is not here tonight. So we'll move on to the consent items.
Move approval of items E1 through 4 and 6 through 14.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Hanol?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
Director Jay? President Jay?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
So, we have item E5, which was pulled by Director Gonzalez.
We've received a lot of email traffic about consultants and mostly from teachers not understanding why we spend so much on consultants. And I just thought, this is an ongoing issue that perhaps this could be addressed at a board meeting so that we could talk about this. Perhaps the superintendent could address this to help people understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, and get feedback as well.
Certainly, for these items, I'll let the-
Certainly, for these items, I'll let the, the experts speak to them. But one of the reasons why we have actually changed this process and put the cover sheet on is so that more people understand, for example, where the dollars are coming from. So for example, our grant dollars are specifically to be used for things like this, the EIA supplemental dollars, I'll let Diane speak to it more. And even the third item on this, the one going to the library systems, it's not actually in the sum of things, a new expenditure. It'll be cost neutral. It's changing our provider to have a more streamlined system. Again, I'll let Rick speak to that because it's got some technicalities that I'm sure I've missed, but it really is about streamlining a system, knowing we have two separate districts who have had two separate systems, that a singular system will help our larger system. And the way it's being done is cost neutral. So again, the format in which we do these is to clarify the funding source so that people can see that these are not base dollars being spent on items like this and that these dollars are in fact for these things. And when it is a base fund, something like library, you understand that, yeah, that's something for every student everywhere. That's exactly what these dollars are for as well. I'll let the two experts go.
Actually, can I jump in? I wasn't specifically wanting explanations for these. I was talking more in terms of a broader discussion. You know, often like what has come through the emails is questions, why aren't we doing this in-house? Why don't we have more teachers do it? So I was looking at a more broader conversation, not these specific items in order to kind of, so that we, hopefully, every board meeting, we don't have all this email traffic for, for consultants. So I, I don't really, I wasn't asking for a specific report this evening.
Oh, okay.
So process?
Yeah. And, and why, why we spend, you know, so much on consultants because I know it's slightly higher in our district percentage-wise. I think just having a broader discussion about this, not these specific items. Okay.
I, I appreciate what you're, what you're stating there, and I think that does need to happen. But I was also going to pull it because I was curious as to the money spent for the library system, how that was spent, the $95,000. Is that right? I'm sorry, my, is the print really small? The 98, 98156?
So as Superintendent Shields mentioned, we are currently using two library systems, one for the secondary and one for the elementary school system, both of which, one of them is more current, the other one is approximately 10 to 12 years old. It's been kind of limping along, and we've been facilitating the use of that through our own maintenance and then the, the work of the contracts that we have to provide maintenance for those systems. We looked at several solutions last school year in terms of how we could streamline processes, combine systems, and bring everything under one umbrella for the district. Through that process, the Follett system that's on the board agenda was selected for feature and functionality, and it's already being used in half of the district today. With this, it's going to bring, or remove the older system, bring everything under one software provider, excuse me, as well as give us additional capabilities, including textbook inventory and management. So not only will it be cost neutral and actually a cost savings after year three on an annual basis for yearly fees, we also hope by utilizing it for textbooks, we'll be able to recover more textbooks as well, providing additional savings through using the system as a management tool.
And the cost, that cost was for the consultant or for the, the actual purchase?
For, for the, the contract to use their services, the Follett services.
That's what I didn't understand. Thank you very much.
I'd be happy to have that kind of a discussion. I actually, having gotten all the email contract, or all that email traffic, I apparently didn't have a life. And so I sat down and I went through the last 14 months of our consultant contracts and looked at them all and tallied them up, put them into categories. And I think it would be extremely helpful to have a discussion with respect to that because it was very illuminating for me. And I'll just briefly tell you what that illumination was. By far, the, by the largest percentage in the last 14 months has been for professional development for teachers. That's some 38%, $911,000 that has been spent with respect to it. The next highest level is something I call other staff. We had a tech person that left, it took a while before we hired Rick, so we ended up hiring somebody for $27,000. We had a GASP review, there were bond costs, there's some, some tech backup systems that were immediately put into place, COACH certifications, closing 60 DSA projects and some mental health issues that ended up being 15%. The next at 13% was special ed staffing. The largest portion of that relates to our inability to get full-time folks and our need to go outside and, and receive that. The next highest of 12.6% is grants. $303,000, it's not coming out of general funds, it's money that we receive from grants that tell us, here's who you have to hire and this is who you need to, to use. The next highest was restorative resources at $238,000, which I think has been clearly quite successful at a number of different levels, not the least of which is probably more than pays for itself. And then the rest of it were relatively low numbers. $92,000 for what I call communication, videos from Maker Camp, parent prenatal classes out to the community, EL Master Plan. Next lowest, $82,000 for services to collect things like being able to properly bill at Medi-Cal, utility savings, developer fees. All of those, $82,000, were consultants that actually more than pay for themselves in, in going out and collecting it. The next lowest was site requests. These are specific requests in the vast majority of consultants in terms of number. But $50,000 for various curriculums. And the last, the lowest number was what I term administrative PD, professional development for administrators, which was 2%, a total of $49,600. So whoever's going to do the report, I've done a fair amount of work if you, if you want to use that. But I think it was really helpful. It was really helpful to walk through. And until you get information out to folks, people have a tendency to hear one thing or hear another and then believe that this is, you know, something that is pervasive and that there's something wrong with it. And we can always look. And I was one that was very interested in changing this form so that we actually had the contract, where the money was coming from and everything. And I think what that has done is it's caused people to look deeper into it. And so it's worth doing. But I was pretty, pretty pleased with what I saw come out of that analysis. So if you want all the paperwork, it's here.
Thank you, Director Carl. Director Close?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to have a, a discussion session about our use of consultants overall. I think it would be real illuminating. I appreciate Bill, the work that you did. One thing that I also want to address is I think this will be helpful for people to hear in the meantime is because we get a lot of questions about why can't our current administrative staff handle all these roles? And so I do just want to remind people or maybe inform them for the first time that we actually, believe it or not, operate on an administrative staff that is less than 70% the norm for a district our size. So I think we're probably squeezing a lot of value out of these guys and, already. And so particularly when there's areas of real specificity, not only do we probably have comparatively some extra dollars to spend for that because we do have a small staff, but we're, they're probably, like Bill said, I think in some cases paying for themselves because they do offer expertise that we don't have.
I'll move approval of item E5.
Second. Approved by Director Carl, seconded by Director Hanlon. Roll call vote, please.
Okay.
Yes.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Hanlon?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
President Jay?
Aye.
Student Board Member?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll move on to our F items, discussion action items. First one up is Santa Rosa City Schools Emergency Preparedness Plan. I will turn it over to Superintendent Shields.
Yes, we have a team who will present today, take us through the process and our learnings from our storm in December.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Shields. You're the, you're the clicker man. I thought it apropos that said, and I started with, and then the rains came. And I have to admit that as somebody who's worked in the district for, this is my 20th year, during the discussions, and there were a lot of discussions that led up to early Thursday morning, I was like, we've never done this here since I've been here. It's only a little rain. You know, I've seen floods, I've seen, I could go into James Taylor, but I won't. So I was, you know, I felt like, hmm, this is interesting. And every day for me is a learning experience. And again, this will be, I promised my last weather-related statement, events shine light onto areas that need our attention. So since this time, we've actually spent a lot of time together as a cabinet, looking at what is it we do? And I bring with me the site experience, which I think we do an outstanding job in this district, and with the help of Bill Sternus, who, who couldn't be here with us tonight because of family reasons, really preparing our sites to deal with all sorts of emergencies. I mean, we practice for earthquakes, active shooter, fire, all of those things, full evacuations, partial evacuations, student handoff. We have teams where we, at site levels coordinate who's student release, who's, you know, search and rescue, something we do really well on an individual site basis. But it's something that we need to do at a larger coordinated level, meaning that there needs to be a communication of yes, all of our sites do a great job. And as a site administrator, I always wanted parents to know that, you know, your students are safe with us. So know that if they're at school, they're at a great place because schools are a safe place. Schools are designated as emergency relief shelters in many occasions throughout our country. So know that we'll take care of your kids. I've always tried to communicate that to my parent community, as did all administrators in our district. But there needs to be, it needs to go from that level to the more global level as we saw as we were going through the events on December 11th. So what we've done since then, Rick and I have been working with not only the cabinet, but reaching out to both city and county officials because we realized that every agency has there, the city has their POIS and EOC, which is the Emergency Operations Center. And so we're looking to make connections from the site to the district office, to the city, to the county, so that in event of emergencies in the future or similar inclement situations like we had in December, we are quick to communicate. We use all agencies and all avenues of communication. It was interesting, I met on Monday with Paul Loenthal from the city, and he is their PIO information person. I don't know what PIO stands for, but I'm that too. I'm the, thank you, Public Information Officer. I should know that from my SEMS chart. And he was like, it would have been nice to communicate with you because I was getting information about schools and we're getting calls from parents. And so those kinds of things need to be taken care of and will be taken care of as we continue this work as a district. So we have to also recognize that this was, you know, kind of a regional event. You know, it wasn't just our district, but districts around the county were impacted. And come to find out, for me, it was interesting to, I, I just assumed that there were things in place to take care of this that, across the county. And it really was enlightening for me that, that there weren't. And so we have an opportunity to kind of be a leader in this area and be working with SCO, working with the county agencies and the city agencies to kind of set up a model that then will be taken back to SCO as this is what we're setting up with Santa Rosa. And we just started that kind of process on Monday. The other thing we learned is, and came out of this, is that we really needed to kind of look at our systems. And so I'm going to let Rick and Steve talk for a second here.
Thank you, Jason. Through, through the process and things that we have been talking about with you through study sessions and bond planning is really looking at eliminating single points of failure and providing redundancy in our systems. What we found out, the storms actually did not take down our systems. They were not able to handle the capacity of phone calls coming in and phone calls going out simultaneously. We've had some other issues that showed, or has shown that we have single points of failure that could cause lapse in services. So we're taking the opportunity, as Jason said, to work not only internally evaluating our current systems and putting in, or preparing to put in safeguards for future events, but also working with city and county agencies to be in contact with them and also have a seat at their table as these events are happening.
Yeah, no, okay. And on this slide, you can see that, actually, it was... I got this one, Steve. At first, would just like to say, and the first thing is the most important thing, is that the Santa Rosa City School staff did an outstanding job. We had teachers who made it on campus and were helping, making sure that students got back home, got back on buses. They were there till every student was accounted for and taken care of. We had maintenance and operations staff who were up very early through the coordination with Steve and Jeff Herbert to make sure that they were on sites and keeping things as, you know, evaluating facilities and making sure that things were maintained so that things were clear and classrooms didn't flood and campuses didn't flood. And we also had CNS workers who, because we, other, we serve other districts beyond our own contractually, CNS workers were here on both of those days, making sure that they met and prepared the food for those districts that we serve through those extra contracts. So I wanted to just acknowledge that first and foremost, that we really have great people that we can count on when things like this happen. So part of this also for me and for our cabinet is looking at, we always have to remember, and this is something I had to do as a site administrator, that all in public employees are disaster service workers. If we reach in, you know, I always say that I hope the earthquake comes in July at about 9:25 on a Saturday. If it's going to happen, let's happen that day so that everybody's home, at least out of bed, having their coffee before the big one comes. But all the other days it could happen, we know that, and this is something we really did prepare for well at a site level, evaluating our, understanding that we are public service workers and that our schools will be used by the community if they're, if they're, you know, once we evaluate them, they're able to be used for, you know, disaster relief. I've been working with RESIG to establish what they, it's a kind of a employee release protocol. They have, and they'll be working with the county and other districts as well, so that we can communicate that to principals, to understanding that even though we're public employees in an event of disaster, we certainly have employees who have personal obligations, elderly parents, infants, other situations where we have to account for that and allow them to make sure that their own families are safe in events of serious emergencies. We also are making sure, like I said earlier, that both our school safety plans, emergency disasters, that's a hard one to say, emergency disaster preparedness plan, I'm surprised it's not the EDPP because like everything else, we just shorten it, are really in line and together so that from one level to the next level, so from the school site to the county, we have systems in place to make sure that structurally, we have the systems and, and we have the electronic systems to make sure that everybody's working together in event of emergency. Next slide.
And this just shows some of the items that the storm caused with the rain. We had some roof leaks at most of the sites, which is not surprising. We had contractors that we called for some of the larger areas, and they came out and, and actually, they prefer to come out when it actually is raining and there are the leaks. It makes it easier for them to determine where the leaks are coming from, what course of action they need to take. Some of the smaller ones, we were able to take care of with our staff. We had some clogged drain lines in the parking lots. You can see a picture of the quad area at Elsie. Can't see it real well, but that's the quad area at Elsie. You know, we had some interior building leaks where some water came in through the, the threshold and we had it on the, the floors. But, you know, damaged ceiling tiles, some minor interior flooding, you know, nothing really out of the ordinary, given the rainfall. Excellent. And this one, it just kind of reiterates what Jason talked about, that the custodians and the head custodians were on site. They were there early, they were doing a great job in terms of making sure that as soon as they were aware of a problem, they were out taking care of it. They were making sure that Jeff and I knew aware of it or were aware of it, maintenance took care of it. And as Jason said, Jeff and I were in contact before 5 o'clock that morning. We were in the district before 6 o'clock, before 6 o'clock, just making sure that we had everything in place and that we had people on site and they knew what to do and, and who to contact and make sure that everything was taken care of properly. And as he also said, CNS stayed and they made, because we had contracts that we have with other districts, those districts didn't close. So if we, if our food service workers didn't stay and make those meals and deliver those meals, then those students wouldn't have had those, those meals that they expect every day and that were contracted to provide. And MNO staff from the district, you know, office, they were out and they were doing anything and everything that they needed to do to make sure that buildings were taken care of and needs were addressed as they came along. One of the things that came out as an outcropping of all of this was the instructional minutes and then also the instructional days. and then also the instructional days. And so after that, all of this, what I did is we talked with CDE, we talked with SCO, to determine, you know, what are our options? What can we do? What should we do? And as you can see from this here, that with the number of days that we had, we are still fine, and we don't have to ask for an exemption. The exemptions are mostly if your schools are open that day, and you have a marked decrease, or, you know, an abnormal amount of absences because of whatever the event may be. Since we were closed, that wasn't necessarily applicable, or isn't applicable with us, and CD said we did not have to do that. The next step was then to look at the number of instructional days, and then also the number of instructional minutes that we have at each of our sites. And going through and doing that, and running all the paperwork, and doing, running the numbers, we're actually are fine in terms of both the number of instructional days, and also the number of instructional minutes, as far as the state is concerned. Now, you as a board have passed, you know, a resolu, or not a resolution, but have a board policy, that our instructional minutes are higher than what the state is. So the last bullet point, you can see there are four of our sites, that according to the board policy, will not have the high enough amount of instructional minutes. And the minutes that you see up there are for the year. They're not for one day, or they're cumulative for the year. So like I said, we do meet the CDE requirements, the state requirements, it's just the board requirements that these four sites would not be in compliance with.
So Steve, what that means is that Maria Creo High School, for the entire year, is four minutes shy of the board policy?
Correct.
Okay. Let me, help me for a second. I'm trying to wrap my head around that. If you have a bell schedule that ends at 2:30, the only way to resolve that is to end it at 2:30 and 3 seconds. Times 178 days can get you to four minutes, if that's the number. I think I'm reasonably close with. So how is it that, I mean, how do you calculate that they're off by four minutes? I guess I'm having a hard time understanding how you do that.
Because you have a total, and it falls four minutes below that, absent two days.
Because we took the number of minutes per day, the number of days, added it all together, looked at what the board requirement is, and it was four minutes short.
So the way to resolve that is literally tell them to hold the bell for 10 seconds a day?
Yeah, or one minute for four days, or yeah, whatever combination.
So the upshot is, we're doing a good job. We're within reasonable limits.
Yes.
And I think it's important, that's a board requirement, that's not a state requirement. Okay, I just want to, Director Hanlon?
Or you accept a motion right now to absolve Maria Creo of the four minutes.
Well, if that's the direction by the board, we would bring something back next time for all of the schools.
That's, that's what I think we ought to do.
It makes sense.
Again, I apologize, I got ahead of myself on the slides here, but this is, again, just a reminder that our school sites, high schools are mass dispensing sites for public health emergencies, which means if, you know, we need to give flu shots, or whatever it is that comes out of that, that's another use of our facilities. And this is all organized through the Sonoma County Health. And again, we will be working with both the county and the city to really kind of evaluate our processes, and to make sure that we utilize what they have in place, and they in turn want to utilize what we have in place, in event of emergencies, to get information out to the community as quickly as possible.
So as I mentioned before, previously, we are also working to address this in the future. I've mentioned the importance of the bond measures, and what that will mean to us from a systems perspective, in order to bring this to current, and to bring in, remove the single points of failure, and be able to have adequate, excuse me, adequate systems in place in the event of a future emergency. We're sort of looking with Steve and MNO, areas of infrastructure, from my perspective, as well as just from a building perspective, what needs to be done in order to have survivable buildings, and make sure that they're accessible in the event that something does happen. And this is a coordinated effort that we'll be addressing, along with the bond program, with our architects and bond consultants, working to make sure that the money that we do use also addresses these types of scenarios in the future.
If I could too, just kind of make a translation, because sometimes Rick, I don't always understand what he says, sometimes it gets very formal. But one of the big takeaways was that our telephone system is a weakness for us. It is very old, it is unstable, it is something we will be bringing back in terms of a priority of replacing, so that it is much more robust across the district, both for daily use, but certainly in emergency usage. It was a great weakness. And the morning of the storms, phones were going down left and right across sites. And we, I mean, we experienced that normally, actually, that a site goes down for a short period of time, or another site goes down for, and sometimes over the most ran, it feels, random of issues. But during the storm in particular, when it was critical to have communication, and phones went down, it was one of kind of the last straws of safety concerns, that really pushed for a different decision as we moved forward.
Any questions or comments?
Director Close.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. I know, Jason, you were talking about thinking back a year, 20 years, working for the district, whether or not we'd ever close, and we'd have some big storms during that time. And I was also thinking back to when we were both at Montgomery High School, and of course, Mr. Hanlon was a teacher at that time at Montgomery High School. And we had an enormous storm, I believe in '86, bigger than this one, and we didn't close. And, but of course, there's all kinds of variables. And it seemed like at this time, that morning, that once there was a decision with respect to the roads and the buildings, that everything was safe, that looked great. But the one variable, well, there's lots of variables we can't control, but one of the variables we can't control are how many people are having a hard time getting to work. And so my understanding is that one of the chief problems was that we just really didn't have enough teachers to, you know, open for school that day, with, to maintain legal ratios, is that-
We were definitely monitoring, I mean, almost live, as I was monitoring, you know, the AESOP system, where people putting their absences. And that certainly was a concern. We wanted to make sure that we had the staffing to provide a safe setting for our students, which is, you know, the most important thing in what we do. And we also realized that we have staff that come from all over the region. So, you know, staff members found themselves in a situation where they, you know, it was, if it's difficult for them to come to work, they have to take their own, you know, think about their safety. And we had subs in the same situation. So as we were watching this unfold that morning, we were seeing that, yes, that was certainly going to be the case, that we weren't going to be able to provide the safe environment that we needed to for our students.
Right. So it did seem like in that situation, that that was, you know, is, I know a lot of people complained about the lateness of the decision, but that, that was sort of unavoidable at that point. But, and then looking forward, if that, if something like that were to happen again, but as you mentioned, it's, schools are a safe place for our students. And also, they are, practically speaking, used as a place for students to be while their parents earn money. And is there, are there other things, like if we could predict this, and say, for some reason, we know we're going to have, we can predict that we might have a staff shortage, or can we have assemblies with the fewer staff-to-student ratio, or do we always have to have the same staff-to-student ratio?
I know that we've had those discussions at a site level, as far as what do we do? Because that would be the reality, even if, in the event of a major disaster, where staff could be injured, unable to, you know, provide supervision. So we do have those situations, those plans in place at the site level. I mean, you have to assess the safety of your buildings. The gym may not be safe. So we have outside areas, we have, I know at Slater, we have people who their job is to kind of supervise all, you know, 700 and something students, which to me would be an interesting thing to have to be part of. I always thought search and rescue would be way more interesting. But, so yes, we do have those plans in place, and we want to make sure that we're, you know, prepared to provide, when we do have kids on campus, systems and, as safe systems for them to be cared for, while we're either waiting for parents, or emergency medical, or whatever the situation may be.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions? I would like to, I think, I would like to suggest that we do bring this item back as a, the minutes, exemption of the minutes from San Rosa French-American Charter, Lawrence Cook Middle School, Herbert Slater Middle School, and Montgomery High School, Maria Creo High School, as a consent item. Do I have agreement with that, from my board members? Okay, so could we do that?
Done.
Thank you.
Yes, we will bring that back.
Okay, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to F2, which is Second Reading and Adoption of Proposed Board Policy and Administrative Regulation in the 1,000 Series, which relates to Community Relations and Uniform Complaint Procedures. Superintendent Shields?
Yes, this is a regular item. I will let Mr. Lee speak to this, regarding how we're doing with our uniform complaint process.
Thank you very much. This is actually the second reading in action for this item. This is an update that is a recommendation from CSBA to include the LCAP in our uniform complaint process. So this is actually a requirement by law. So we are adding that to our process, which allows people who have complaints or concerns about the LCAP to voice those in the same manner they do in other situations.
Any comments or questions?
No, I'll move approval of item F2.
Second.
That's approved by Director, moved by Director Carl, seconded by Director Christoph. Roll call vote, please.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Christoph?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Hanlon?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Jay?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to item F3, which is a resolution proclaiming February 2015 as National African-American History Month. I have one card for speaker of, on this topic, David Graybill.
I wanted to speak about charter school enrollment process. It said it was F-
Oh, sorry.
But I think it's really tricky.
It is F4, yes.
No problem.
Yes, that's a typo. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move approval of item F3.
Second.
Second.
That's a motion by, moved by Director Carl, seconded by Director Close. Roll call vote, please.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director, okay, Director Hanlon's out. Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
Director Christoph?
Aye.
President Jay?
Aye.
Director Hanlon?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to the F4, which is Element H, enrollment process for our dependent charters. This is an action item. Superintendent Shields?
Yes, we have a team here today to speak to you about the suggestions made, and kind of situate this information for you, so that the board can take this action this evening. I give the mic to Dr. Guzman.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Shields, school board members. Tonight, I have with me Stephanie Farland, our charter school consultant, and John Yay, our charter school lawyer. I'll take you a little bit through how we're going to go through tonight. I'm going to hand the mic over to Stephanie. She's going to talk a little bit about the background, and sort of how we got here. And then I'm going to give John an opportunity to talk about LM&amp;H. Just a refresher, you did vote LM&amp;H in as a whole, however, the two sub-action items on siblings and dual immersion, you directed staff to go back and sort of rework that. And you'll see that you'll have some options tonight to vote on, and obviously some time to ask clarifying questions. So thank you, and here's Stephanie.
Good evening. So yes, I wanted, I just want to give a brief overview. I know that you are well aware of the process that we've been going through the last year, year and a half. But just for the community and the public, to give a real quick overview of how we got to the point we are today. If you remember, when the accelerated charter was going through renewal, the issue of preferences and enrollment preferences came up. It just so happened, at the same time as this charter was going through renewal, the district did receive a letter from a civil rights group that was taking a close look at districts and dependent charters across the state. In that letter, they, it was actually a letter, a request for public records, had some questions and concerns about the enrollment patterns at your dependent charter schools, and specifically this dependent charter school, which really, really opened, I think, the eyes of a lot of folks about how those enrollment preferences were decided upon, and whether or not the current, at the time, enrollment preferences were working towards integrating our schools, the Santa Rosa schools, and specifically the charter schools, which is really a cornerstone of the charter law. In many places in charter law, you see that charters are supposed to reflect the diversity and demographics of the district. Charter law gives preference for underserved students. So it really is a cornerstone of that law. And so, so started the conversation about how it would be the best way to, to have your dependent charters reflect what Santa Rosa is in terms of demographics. It's been a long road. We've had lots of conversations. We've had lots of conversations with the schools themselves. It has broadened to include all of your dependent charter schools, which, you know, is, really, when you think about it, I work a lot with districts across the state, and you are not the only district dealing with preferences in chart, in dependent charter schools. It's really become a hot topic for lots of districts. And my guess is, because many districts have also received the certain, those types of letters, and civil rights groups, community groups, looking into enrollment preferences of dependents, really targeting dependents, I think, because district boards have a role in dependent charters, and can actually make some changes there. So I actually commend the board, because you're kind of ahead of the curve. You've started this, you know, a year and a half ago, and many charters are just now starting to think about how they, how they create their enrollment preferences for their schools, and how they can address the segregation of some of our charter schools in the state of California, and across the state. If you look, look at the news, I just saw an article yesterday, that talked about high, high-performing charter schools are very segregated in many parts of the country. So it really is an issue that you are not alone in struggling with. So that's really how we got to be here today. You know, you've done a lot of work, you have made sure that the purpose of making sure that every student has access to your schools has been at the forefront of this conversation. So really, lots of districts around the state are going to be looking here, to see, to see what happens. And I think, you know, we, as Anna said, you did have a vote last board meeting. This board meeting is sort of specific to these issues that are in your agenda today, your four choices. And so I think I'll turn it over to John to describe those four choices, and how we arrived at them.
Thank you, Stephanie, and good evening, members of the board. You have in your board packet the revised Element H. You will recall, two weeks ago, you took action to approve the overall design of Element H, and that's indicated in the box in the upper right-hand corner. We had identified, staff had identified two sub-options, one dealing with the language immersion charters, and the other dealing with the sibling preference, and gave direction staff, to staff to come back with further options for the board to consider. And what I'm going to do is to walk through what staff has prepared, really with an eye of carrying out the objective that Stephanie articulated, in terms of tackling segregation in the charter schools, and the dependent charter schools, and meeting the district's constitutional requirements. So if you are following along, I would like to first start with page three, and address the dual immersion issue, because that one is- the dual immersion issue, because that one is, I think, the one that's more readily explained. So last time, two weeks ago, staff had prepared some proposed language and, or the board had given staff direction to reconfigure that language. And so that reconfigured language is here, identified as sub-action item number two. And essentially, pursuant to the board's direction, that sub-item number two, sub-action item number two, now reads that if the charter is a dual immersion charter, it may implement an admissions preference for students with proficiency in a native language, if necessary, to optimize the performance of that program and the effectiveness of that program by increasing the percentage or proportion of native speakers to non-native speakers to 50/50. And the parent or the applicant would have to submit this home language survey that's submitted to their school district indicating that the child is proficient in the target language, and that's the native language. And there was concern expressed last time, there was some language that was a bit more subjective that centered around whether the child or the family is interested or proficient in a language, but we believe staff brainstorming came up with something that hopefully is more objective, and that's the language that's identified on the home language survey. Yes?
Okay. This is a good time for questions on that.
Sure.
My concern with this is that in a dual immersion program, you're really trying to get a 50/50 balance. So my question is on that, requires a higher percentage of native speakers or non-native speakers. What we have in our, our charter school over at, our Spanish immersion charter, we have, I think, more native speakers than non-native speakers, so it might take a preference to a native speaker coming in, because there, it is desirable for that 50/50 balance. So that's my question, should we add that language to it?
I think that's something that when the board has discussion can decide whether it wants to proceed by way of a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, the second topic is the sibling preference, which is on the bottom of page one of your Element H. And you will recall that staff came to you last time with some proposed language and a sibling preference, and there are a number of competing interests and objectives here. And of course, there's the objective of achieving the ratio and ethnic diversity and balance within the dependent charter schools that's reflective of that of the district as well. Some of the feedback received from the charter schools and the community meetings was that the sibling preference, if not designed in a way to reflect the fact that not all the dependent charter serve the same range of grade levels, would not apply uniformly. And there was a concern expressed by the board and by staff at the last meeting that the, the mere idea of a sibling preference actually runs counter to this attempt to make the schools more exclusionary and more reflective of the ethnic and racial balance. So what I'm going to do is identify the now four options on Element H and explain the context of why that, why they're there and which one of those interest or interests that they serve, so the board has a, an idea of the full array of options and what they're intended to convey. So if you look at page one, under sub-action item one, that's the chart at the bottom of page one, sub-option number A, and we're asking the board to pick one of the four options as the ultimate sibling preference, is quite simply a preference for all applicants who have siblings currently enrolled in the charter school. And the accelerated charter brought to staff's attention that that did not apply uniformly to accelerated, because it only served two grade levels and therefore there was a narrower band of applicants who would receive that preference. So that's, that is the context behind that option as well. However, a narrower band also does open the school up to a more, a wider demographic range of students as well. So that's, those are the two competing or balancing interest. Sub-action B, or 1B, I should say, is the option we actually brought to you last time, and that was the catalyst for your rather lengthy discussion, and that was the preference for applicants with siblings either at the charter or at the district school at which the charter was located. And that, again, we mentioned last time, was actually to facilitate, facilitate the parents' interest in transporting students and to have their siblings attending school that were in close geographic proximity to each other. So that was really the interest of the parents. That one, we actually placed there for historical context. We understand that two weeks ago, that was what we brought to the board. The board came back to us with direction to revise it, so that's therefore context. C is what staff has presented in response to the board's direction. And there was extensive discussion about how to implement this geographic preference or the sibling preference in a way to facilitate transportation for parents. And so staff worked on essentially making the preference apply to, to not only siblings, applicants who had siblings attending the school, but siblings attending any, a school within the enrollment feeder pattern of, of the location where the charter school itself was located. And I think Director Carl, last time you had expressed it in terms of scope and sequence, and we worked with kind of the wording on that, and I think what we were trying to get across was schools that were in geographic proximity to each other would be defined by whether they fed into the next level. So C is specifically what was proposed in response to the board's direction and captures an option that has a sibling preference that to facilitate, again, from the parents' point of view, the transportation issue for parents sending more than one child to more than one district school. So B and C are transportation focused, but since there was some discussion at the last board meeting that the sibling preference itself was somewhat at odds with the segregation issue, staff also prepared a sub-option D as well. So just to place in the proper context to help the board kind of understand where it came from, D didn't come from specific board direction, but came from the remarks that were made on the sibling, sibling preference as they related to the segregation issue. And so D essentially provides a sibling preference for applicants with siblings in the charter school or who had siblings in the past, who had attended the charter school in any of the seven prior school years. And that was one of the many, many sibling preferences that, one of the iterations that at one point existed in one of the dozen drafts that Element H went through. It was in response to the accelerated school and their concerns that it wouldn't apply uniformly. So, so that, sub-D is coming from that place. However, there's also an added element to it, and you will note that sub-D, if considered or adopted by the board, is intended to be considered in conjunction with the lottery preferences on the next page, on page three. And so if the board adopts D, it would at the same time increase the lottery draws for students eligible for a free and reduced lunch from two draws to four draws. So it would double the number of draws. And the rationale behind that is that there are two purposes being served here. One is to serve the uniformity, uniformity purpose to, to ensure that the sibling preference uniformly applies to all your dependent charters with different grade level ranges, and also that we carry forward our legal and constitutional mandate as well to take on some of the concentration and segregation patterns in the charter school. And we do that by actually doubling the free and reduced preference as well to, to, when you reach the lottery part. The last part of this is that, as you know, the way we've set this up, the sibling, the siblings get in first, and then if there's time, if there's space remaining, then we run the lottery, and that's where the free and reduced come in. So we looked at the numbers, and I'll turn it over to Stephanie momentarily, to summarize, to make sure that actually historically, that the class wouldn't be fully populated before you got to the lottery, because if the class is populated with siblings before you got to the lottery, that would pretty much moot the lottery and we would never hit the free and reduced preference, and that would be a problem. So I'm going to hand it over to Stephanie, and she's going to give a brief summary of kind of the historical data that shows the extent to which our dependent charters actually reached the lottery.
So I'm actually going to take this one a little bit, sort of in polling the charter schools from last year's enrollment, the four charter schools, that you can see, and I believe that this information might have been shared with you a little bit, that siblings are not taking up that many slots, although in the arts charter, which where space is limited, and they're only open, able to open up, I believe, two kindergartens a year. You can see they have the highest number of siblings, which is, for last year, it was 19, but obviously that varies on year to year. But for the most part, looking at last year's data, siblings were not a high number as far as taking spots. I hope I answered that correctly. So I'm going to turn it back over to you or, for questions?
We're going to go with public comment at this point.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll take it back to the board. So I have, if you want to speak to the board on this issue, you need to submit a blue card. So far, I have two. The first one is David Graybill, and the second one is Victor Lacome. You each have three minutes to speak on this item.
Just lost speech that I held on my phone, and it...
The battery died, huh? The screen went black, David.
So I'm David Graybill.
Turn the mic on.
I don't think the mic's on.
Your mic's on.
It's on, it's on, you're good. It's on, it's on now.
It's on. Okay, I don't have to, I don't have to yell. Oh, sorry. I'm David Graybill. I'm here on behalf of Quest, which is advocacy group that advocates for fairness in our public education system. We are very concerned about charter schools in general. They tend to discriminate for some good reasons and some not-so-good reasons. You can't complain too much about the good reasons, but we're here to complain about the bad reasons. And one of the big problems we're seeing here in Santa Rosa, we got a, we got a charter school, Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter, two point, under, it's under 3%. I think it's 2.5% of the students at Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter are education, economically disadvantaged, compared to the district-wide number, which is 60% educationally disadvantaged. 2% versus 60%. How does that happen? Okay, Rincon Valley, little, little more upscale area, it's one reason. There may be some others, but doesn't justify a 58% difference. So how are you going to, how are you going to fix it? We encourage the board to, to look for ways to fix it, but you got to lean on these folks. You got to push them. You can't say, "Well, we're going to have a legacy system. If your kids have gone to Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter in the past seven years, we're going to let the, the young, younger siblings go there." What rationale is there for that? Okay, if they've got kids, siblings currently enrolled, maybe there's some transportation advantage to that. They shouldn't be allowed to have a seven-year legacy policy. They shouldn't really be allowed to have any legacy policy until they take meaningful steps to go out in the community and, and help encourage kids of all income levels to go there. And, and that takes some effort and will, and I hope they have it. I'm doubtful, but your consultant, a consultant's report about charter schools a couple of years ago said, "Whoa, these charters are stepping over the, the law, over the boundary that the law sets on, on discrimination," and they can't do that. And Quest will do whatever we can to, to stop it. We hope the board will stop it. We're, we know all of you, and we know how much you care about our, our students, but we got to have equity in our, in our public schools. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask David a question, please?
Yes.
David, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I value your legal background in, in this regard, and I appreciate your comments. Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter is, is different in the sense that it's only two grades. We practically speaking, in every other charter school, have a seven-year timeframe that fits by accepting a sibling that is already in the school, which has its clear value relative to transportation for a family, et cetera. So Santa Rosa American Char, or Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter would be the only school that would be negatively impacted just by virtue of the fact it's only two grades. Staff has suggested that in dealing with that and creating an equity with that, with that charter school with all, that you actually double the amount of economically disadvantaged students that would, would move up in the lottery. And so for every one that is just a regular district resident, four economically advantaged get to move up. So presumably, you're moving much, much faster towards an equity with respect to that. What about that system do you have concerns about?
With Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter, there's no rationale for the legacies. The rationale that was expressed here was, well, transportation, you, it'd make it easier for kids to get to school if you, if they've got a sibling already there. But Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter is two years. Why should they get a seven-year legacy priority? Set the legacy that if you have a child enrolled at this charter school, your sibling, a sibling can have priority or preference to go there. That would be a rational. But if you had a kid, a child that went there in first grade and then switched and went somewhere, someplace else for second grade, younger sister or brother comes along, wants to go to first grade, that child should not have a sibling priority if their older, older sibling is not currently enrolled in the school. There's no, no possible reasonable, especially if there's this huge gap between the, the educationally disadvantaged and the, and the charter school population, student population in general.
So actually, your, your point has raised something I hadn't thought about relative to D. Let's get away from Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter. Let's go to French American Charter. Pick one, and any one that's a K8, Santa Rosa Arts Charter. Let's go to Santa Rosa Arts Charter. Somebody, my son goes there first year, and then, you know, I thought, it isn't really working. His ability to do anything artistic is based on the gene pool, not very likely, so we need to get him somewhere else. So we, we take him to, and have him go to Biella School. And my younger daughter, who is six years younger, from the time she was born, seemed to be incredibly artistic. So I want to get her into Santa Rosa American, or Santa Rosa Arts Charter six years later. I think you've just pointed out to me that the fact that my son was there for one year, if, if within seven years, I want another person to go there, even though that person didn't go through, all the way through the program, I have the right to do that. Is that?
You shouldn't have a right to do that.
But I'm, but I think you've pointed out that I, I would under, under that provision.
Under your, under the, the provision that I understand the board's considering, you would. would.
Okay.
I'm saying, if there's a disparity in the student population between that charter schools and the district as a whole, you, it perpetuates that disparity, maybe makes it worse, if you allow legacy, legacy enrollments.
I understand. You and I may disagree relative to Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter, because it's such a short one, but I think what you've pointed out is that there may be a problem with D that was a totally unintended consequence. I understand that, that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a clarif-, well, go ahead.
Clarification, yes. Okay, go ahead.
Which is, if, under this policy, if a student goes to the, say, the Arts Charter for one year and then goes to another school, I, you know, it could be, I was assuming that student had finished there, but our policy says it doesn't.
Same.
So we could make a friendly amendment to that also. Thank you.
Actually, I'm looking at page two, and it does say, "For schools serving fewer than nine grade levels." So Santa Rosa Charter for the eight, for the arts is a K8?
Right, no, but I meant, when David's example was, or Bill's example was, a student goes there the first year and then switches school, that still would give them a sibling preference. I, I didn't think that was...
Yes, to the sibling preference, but not to the seven years as described by D. The D is only applicable to schools like the accelerated charter that are by definition a two-year program, a four-year program, a one-year program. This has a specific clause that it's for schools serving fewer than nine grade levels.
Got it.
Correct, I understand that. But my question is, what Bill was saying is that the student goes there one year and then finds out they don't have the aptitude and they switch to another campus. But maybe six years later, younger sister wants to go there, then they have sibling preference.
It would only, it would only really apply relative to a K6 charter, because the K8s are taken out. So Santa Rosa Arts Charter, French American Charter, Caesar Chavez, are all taken out, all the ones. One could argue that Caesar Chavez isn't currently a K8, but that's what the intent is. No. I think that, I think that solves that problem.
But does the, what's the answer to that question? Would there be sibling preference if your daughter left that school and your younger...
No.
No?
No, unless it was, because the only charter school that we have that is, that creates this issue is Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter. All the other ones are, by the way D is written, eliminated, from that consideration.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Dr. Lacome.
Thank you for having me this evening, and I appreciate you having this meeting. I just wanted to say that I really value the Santa Rosa Public School System. I have two children here in the system. We have them both in the public schools, both in public charter schools. My children both started at Spanish margin schools, and my son is still currently there. My daughter went to the Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School and is currently at Rincon Valley Middle School. I believe that the schools are more than just individual institutions, but that they create a community, and that we've been, we love Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School, we love the Williams very much, and that they have built a wonderful institution there. And their results speak for themselves. And that we are very much looking forward to our son being part of that school, and have built during our time there, relationships with the other families there, with the other children there. Our daughter looks back on those memories there as some of the best that she's spent in her entire time there. And she's spoken to her brother about, you know, the error, and when you go to there, and Mr. Williams is going to do that, and Mrs. Williams is going to do that, and has built up in his mind what to look forward to. And that a lot of our groups of friends built around the experiences she's shared there. And that we're not just isolated in what we do, we build communities, just like when we go to colleges, we build loyalties and relationships within those colleges, and that that's an important part of what we have here in our community. I was on the governing council when I was at my children's school, and so I know a lot about the pressures as far as diversity and lower economic, you know, and balancing, and I know that that's very important, and I think that that's an important thing that we can still do at this charter school and all the charter schools. And that by including loyalty to the schools, will help build with that, with new development of diversity within this school, and that those children are going to be involved with that, and those families are going to want their children to be part of it. So we bring in a child, and we're going to continue to increase that diversity within that school population. And that we want to keep the strength that is already in that school and not erode that in the sense of community that's already there. I think that that's an important part of what the sibling and the eligibility for the siblings that we already have will continue to build within the school that's there. We don't want to erode the strength that we have and something good that's already been built. We want to continue to add new families and increase the overall diversity within that school. So that's my point, and that's what I hope that we can do, is keep building something that's already great, and make it good for more people, and build that model within other charter schools within our system. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have three more speaker cards. Maya Flores, Beth Oroz, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, and Maya and Pam, I don't know. Maya and Pam, I hope you know who you are. Do you know who you are? Want to go first? Okay. So girls, could you introduce yourselves?
I'm Beth Oroz.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to give...
Wait a second, wait a second, who's your friend?
I'm Mia Flores.
Thank you, okay.
I would like to give my opinion on the sibling priority rule. I am a student at Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School. I feel so fortunate to be going to Shacks, and it probably wouldn't be possible without the sibling priority rule. I have an older sister in a high school that went to Shacks, and it prepared her for middle school and high school very well. One of the main reasons I came to Shacks is because I didn't feel challenged enough at my old elementary school. I know that I feel a lot more confident to go to middle school than I would have going to my old school. This rule demonstrates that families that have children, that have attended Shacks, are dedicated and will support Shacks. I feel that Shacks is an amazing way to learn outside of the box and challenge your mind. If the sibling priority rule didn't exist, I wouldn't have gotten this extraordinary chance to be a part of Shacks. Thank you for listening.
Can I ask you where your sister goes to high school?
Montgomery.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mia Flores, and I'm a student at Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School. I agree that the school board should keep the sibling priority rule, because I was one of the results of the sibling priority. I have had a great experience at Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School. I only went to Shacks because I needed a better challenge from my old school. If the school board agreed to keep the sibling priority rule, in further years, my younger sibling, Johan, is in third grade, attending Austin Creek Elementary School this year, and he was going to follow my footsteps by going to Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School. Next year, I will be attending Rincon Valley Middle School, which my older brother went to and said it was a great education, which is right, or, sorry. I also have an older brother named Giovanni, and he is tending Maria Correa High School this year as a freshman. By having my siblings and I attending all schools that are close to one another, makes it easier for my parents dropping us off at schools, and that they know give a great education, and a plus to that is they are all near each other. With the sibling, with the sibling priority, my brother does not have to worry about not getting in and can be excited to go. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Beth and Mia. Okay, next we have Maya and Pam.
Hi, my name is Maya Homich, and I go to the Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School. I have, this school has influenced me in so many different ways. I feel like I am challenged at this school, and it's given me really great opportunities and a really good education. And I agree that, I agree to the sibling priority rule, because my brother, his name is Cole, he's in second grade at Austin Creek Elementary School, and he wants to go to this school so badly. And he, he, in school, he's not, like, sometimes he feels that he's not challenged enough, and he needs a better opportunity for an education, and I think that Shacks really could do that for him, and give him the opportunity he needs, and...
Where are you going to go to middle school?
Rincon Valley Middle School.
And high school?
I want to go to Sonoma Academy.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Pamela Loman-Homich, and I'm Maya's mother. I'm also a parent, obviously, at Shacks, and I'm also a licensed psychologist in the community specializing in pediatrics. So I have a PhD from Yale in developmental psychology. I studied a lot of educational theory and research on, specifically, what I'd like to raise is the effects of parent involvement and community on school success and on student success. I'm speaking specifically just about Shacks, because that's our experience, so I can't speak to the other charters, and I think that a lot of good points have been made already. But what I'd like to speak to is my experience as a parent. I traditionally consider myself a very involved parent. I'm on the Austin Creek Parent Board, because my son goes there right now, and when we first came to Shacks and I was a new parent, I was just getting my feet wet, and it's only a two-year school. So the fifth grade year, I kind of hung back and didn't get very involved. This year, I'm getting more involved, and the idea that my son would also be going there, I'm so much more willing to invest and to, you know, we've built a great community. We have friends and other families that we associate with, and it's just become a place that has brought such tremendous value to our family. And I'm, I'm actually really excited about the efforts to diversify. I think it's really, do I have to go?
Just finish up.
Okay, I think it's a very important thing, and I like that it's tied to option D. I think that that's a really good idea. But I also, I'm concerned about equity within my family. My son is eight, and he needs a place like Shacks. He is in need of differentiation and of that model to education, and I feel like this is the perfect opportunity for him to have that. My daughter was really lucky to have it, and we feel really blessed, but, you know, I look forward to staying in the community, staying involved, and, you know, demonstrating that parent involvement leads to successful student outcomes. And so, keeping that sense of community, I think, is really important. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out. Okay, we have another card from Shelby, is it Moller?
Hi, I am also a parent of a child at Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School and a previous student, and hopefully, a future student, or three. I just wanted to, I was part of the advisory board council last year when we were rechar- or the past, the two previous years to this, when we were re-chartering, and I remember spending a lot of thoughtful time about LMH, and I'm a big proponent of charter schools, that's what I've studied previous to staying at home with my kids. And I don't feel like, I don't think the word discriminate is the proper word. I think the charter school movement tends to self-select a certain group of people that are going out and searching for another public school opportunity for their child. So I wouldn't say, having been a part of the advisory board at Shacks, I wouldn't consider it discriminatory in any way. I would say charter school people, they get up and they go to another campus to apply. Now, I understand they go to the district office to apply, but it just self-selected a certain number of people, wasn't discriminating against a different group of people. And also, it's my understanding that the percentage of students participating in free and reduced lunch that attend Shacks is representative, while not the exact same, of that same populate, that same group of students at RVMS. As I understand, it doesn't perfectly represent Santa Rosa City Schools as an entire district, but it does represent this campus on which it is housed and the community which feeds into there. So again, I just, as someone who participated, I just don't feel like it's discriminatory, it's a very open policy. I understand steps have been made to try to be even more engendering, to invite other people to want to participate and come to that campus. And I hope that we can pass it tonight with keeping a sibling priority in there. I also feel, especially at elementary school level, we really need a community. And so, this is just, this five-six on the campus of the middle school has just created a little bit larger community. But I agree with what Pam just said, a lot, it takes a year or two to get your feet wet often, to understand how the school works and how you can improve and how you can help your students. And I think, I just think we do our students a great service by allowing the siblings to attend. And as someone who has five children, it, the transportation thing should not be taken lightly, and having all my schools in the same geographic area is a real necessity for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Alice Cheng. I hope I pronounced your last name correctly.
Hi, thank you for having us here. I am a parent, and I have a daughter that went through Shacks and had an amazing time there, and I also have a younger sibling, and I'd like to address the sibling thing as well, because my son, who's the younger sibling, has grown up hearing all about her experiences, and there is a four or five-year difference between the two, and he looks very much forward to coming to Shacks. However, the other thing also is that, you know, the group that they have, they all went to Shacks as well, most of the kids. And so, it's very discontinuous to the family, as well as to anybody that have had families that have gone to Shacks before, for the sibling who's looked so forward, they look up to their older siblings to then say, "I'm sorry, there's a possibility that you might not be able to go there." As in any of the public schools, we would have been going to reebly. We don't see this, that, you know, if your sibling went there, that a younger sibling might not have the possibility or the choice of attending that school or not, whether you're from a lower social economic group or from another group. I mean, it doesn't matter. In any family, I think that every sibling looks up to their older siblings, and they try to emulate and to fall on their footsteps. And so, to have that chance, I think it's a little disruptive. You know, I almost think that it'd be better if, if, if the older sibling had not gone to Shacks, if, in the first place, if the younger sibling couldn't go. So, really would like you guys to consider that last option.
Is your daughter currently at Shacks?
Excuse me?
Is your daughter currently at Shacks?
No, she graduated last, two years ago, and so she is an eighth grader now at Middle Rincon, and she's about to go to Santa Rosa High next year.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd be happy to answer any other questions. And my son is in third grade.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, is this one coming down?
Yeah, I just...
Don't worry, don't worry.
My name's Christine, I go to Santa Rosa High School.
Welcome, Christine.
Thank you. So I'm not super informed on this issue, the only things I've heard are at this meeting, so excuse me if I say something that's bad or not relevant. But it seems like the conflict is really about... But it seems like the conflict is really about sibling preference versus maybe a lack of resources or, uh, let's see. In Rincon Valley, I know a lot of people are not economically disadvantaged, but there are certainly kids at that school, Rincon Valley, in that area who are. And I think maybe with the sibling priority, you could keep it, but at the same time, maybe have a contract between the sibling that's coming in that they have to work hard because there might be another or demographically disadvantaged kid who is working just as hard, who didn't have the sibling priority, and that might be the reason that they didn't get into the school. So, I don't know, I just have like maybe a proposal, I guess, that keep the sibling priority, but also consider how hard that sibling's going to work and what success they might produce in that school to allow, to make sure that you're still being fair to the kids outside of the sibling priority who didn't have that, who might have worked maybe harder because then maybe there's another kid who was going to work harder and didn't have a sibling priority. That's all I have to say, really.
Are you in Mr. Brennan's class?
Yes, I am.
No, I think that's cool. I mean, you know, Mr. Brennan has a requirement in his class that you guys come down to a meeting. It's a, it's a rare circumstance that somebody comes down to this meeting and doesn't just sit up there and listen and write the report and take it back, but actually listens to an issue and becomes motivated enough, having not ever heard the issue before, to fill out a card, walk up here, and say something. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
And go back and tell Mr. Brennan that you did that. And Director Carl was very pleased with that.
All right.
And who knows what will happen?
Uh, yeah, well, it just seemed like a lot of people were addressing, like, they were either saying, really just speaking to themselves, but it seemed like the two issues kind of hadn't really confronted each other, which is, one is demographically disabled kids or kids in maybe a minority who have a disadvantage because of that. And then there's also the emotional aspect of, well, my kid really wants to go here, and that really didn't get mixed.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your engagement.
Okay, so now I'd like to bring you back to the board for questions.
Can I interrupt really quick?
Yes, you may.
Thanks. Just could, and just sort of, could John clarify a little bit of the language before we move forward? Would that be fine?
Great.
Thank you so much.
The way option D currently reads, it mistakenly gives the impression that it only applies to Shrax. And that's because the title says for all dependent charter schools serving fewer than nine grade levels. So I just wanted to clarify that option D, as worded, is intended to apply to all the dependent charters. And so the first part reads, "All siblings of students enrolled at and attending the charter school at the time of the lottery." And that's intended for the K-8 charters. If you have a current sibling, then you get the preference. And then the second part, "or who were enrolled at the school at the time during the seven school years prior to the school year for which lottery is being conducted." That is meant to apply to the dependent charters serving less than nine grade levels. So I imagine if there's a friendly amendment that could easily fix that by taking the title and inserting it into the text as a modifier right before the seven-year rule. I wanted to clarify that D is intended to apply to all the charters.
Very important clarification. Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Guzman? Did you want to say anything else?
The clarification for the...
Dual immersion.
Yes.
Yes, as far as the language around the 50/50.
Okay. The, if the board desires to have a friendly amendment to, to address the issue, currently, as it reads right now, the preference is for students whose parents identify as native speakers of the target language. And we can insert the phrase, "as native speakers, comma, or non-native speakers, comma, as needed of the target language." And I think that would help it work both ways. The other suggestion as well for the, going back to the sibling preference, the unintended consequence of someone who enrolls one year, drops out, and triggers the preference. One possible suggestion is, instead of saying students who are enrolled, you can say students who matriculate at any time during the previous seven years, which would, I think, would handle that issue.
Can you explain the difference?
Well, I think there are two scenarios that were brought up. Speaking specifically about Shrax. If a student attended one year during the seven-year window and just, and just moved, moved on for whatever reason, the way it reads right now, and the speaker was correct, that would trigger the preference. And that may not have been in accordance or consistent with the expectations of triggering the preference because if you have a current sibling in any of the K-8s, it would trigger the preference. So I think to, to fix the unintended consequence, instead of having the preference triggered, if you have a student just attend one year and moving on, you would require the student to attend both years and matriculate and complete the cycle before the, the preference would be triggered. Does that, does that explain it?
Okay. Are we ready now to turn it back to the board for questions or, Ron?
No, we all, we all have our shot.
Um, can you tell me what the, the language was prior to these changes that the accelerated charter school's been operating under?
As far as sibling preference?
Yeah.
Um, I believe, I don't have that in front of me right now, but I believe it was, it stated that if you were a sibling, you did get preference currently in the school.
Just currently?
Can I turn around really quickly and look at? So it was for the whole span? So it was, once a sibling, always a sibling? Okay.
So again, it's like if they had a sibling in the school, that was the preference that's been given up to this point?
Yes.
Okay. And then you made a comment that there wouldn't be, you know, there would be spots left over. And I'm looking at this going, this is nuanced to me, you know? Um, I, I think the goal for me, and it's very important, is to, to see diversity, to see that community spirit enjoined by all of our schools that, you know, we saw the big expose last weekend about how we help out and wanting to take people and, and helping them in this community. We have a school community, and I'm a real believer in, in, in local schools. But at the same time, we live in a bigger community too. So I feel a responsibility to, you know, make sure that we are a part of that bigger community as well. When you, I'm sorry, I'm diverting, I'm digressing a bit. Um, when you mentioned that you didn't think that there, there would be spots left over, that the sibling preference wouldn't fill, you know, the school at this point, would that be true of each of the options? Do you think? I, I know this is a hard question. I'm just, I'm, you know, speculating. Maybe somebody from the charter school could answer that. I don't know. You would never fill it? Okay, and then, so how many spots do you, you think might be left over after this? I know there's 60 on the waiting list, I've been told.
So I can look at last year's data?
Uh huh.
For, let's see here, for, there were 16 siblings for fifth grade and zero for sixth grade, and the spots available were 64. And there were 93 applicants.
Okay.
So the only real school that the siblings seem to be impacting for last year was the arts charter. And I think that has to do more around space because they are not able to open up as many kindergartners. And also, remember, we're now, it's a little bit challenging to compare the five-six to a K-8. So they're just taking in fifth and sixth graders versus the arts charter that's taking in primarily, a majority of their applicants are coming in at kindergarten.
Okay. But in, in the case of Shrax now, I've been told that there is a waiting list of 60. Is that correct? There were 60 students that didn't get in last year?
That is correct.
Okay. And then out of the 60, how many of those students would you say were economically disadvantaged that applied? Any idea?
I know the students who qualified for free and reduced lunch last year under this new LMH were accepted. Those six.
Okay, but on the waiting list, you, do we know how many there are? Weren't any at all? I'm sorry. Okay. They're all taken in? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, team. Thank you.
Director Close and then Director Gonzalez.
Thank you. Thank you to staff for working very hard on this for a long time and particularly since our last meeting. And I think you did a pretty good job addressing some of these problems, some of the questions that we had. I, in the last, you know, couple of months really, and then, of course, in the last two or three weeks, I've heard a lot from Shrax parents and staff. And, and again, I want to say congratulations to the Williams and to that community for creating such a, a great community. And it's obviously something that we need to grow. It's too limited a resource. So I don't want to say anything else without first saying that. You know, in general, I'm not at all comfortable in the, in the realm of the public schools in giving any kind of sibling priority or family legacy priority because like, as, as I've mentioned before, there is no such thing as a priority without the flip side being, being discrimination. There's, if there's a limited resource, you can't have one without the other. And I worry about it sort of filtering into other areas. You know, if, did you get a sibling priority to be in the, in the, in the Mr. Hanall English class that everyone is clamoring to be in? Or in Mr. Brennan's history class? Or the traveling, you know, tuba club? So that is, that's something that I'm not particularly comfortable with. And that, and that's one of the reasons that I, I asked for these numbers, the siblings, of how many siblings this actually affected. Because on the other hand, we want a community that's happy with our schools. And we want to support such a successful community. And in this situation, it, it looks like we can probably have a win-win, that we can, we can go ahead and offer, you know, either an option C or option D. We're dealing with the transportation issue. We're giving, you know, fairness to all the charter schools with respect to the length of time the siblings are going to be, have access to that school. But then increasing the ratio of free and reduced lunch students drawn once we get to the lottery system. And for me, if, whether we were voting for option D or for option C, I would want us to increase it to a draw for free and reduced lunch. To me, that's a win-win. It's, we are, we're getting the siblings in and maintaining that sense of community. We're also making sure that once our free and reduced lunch kids get in, that their siblings can get in if, if they want to, to, to deal with the transportation issue. But we are still making some real solid progress towards integrating the schools, which ultimately is the legal, moral, and, and educational imperative here. So I, those are, I think the, the balance of my thoughts. Again, really, I know staff that this has been a lot of work. And I appreciate you for doing what I think is pretty close to threading the needle on this.
Thanks.
Director Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you for the report. And I have a clarification, or I need some clarification. So item or letter D talks about, "For all dependent charter schools serving fewer than nine grade levels." That is, any schools that are not K-8. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So theoretically, I have children who are far apart. And my, I, I enroll them, and I enroll my oldest child in a K-8 school, charter school, whichever one. My, that child leaves that charter school before my youngest one comes in for that, that grade span at that school, K-8, right? So now my student, my, my child maybe is in 10th grade. And I have somebody who's gonna, I have a child who's going to come into kindergarten. I would not get a sibling preference. Is that correct?
For the K-8s, the way it currently reads, the, for the sibling preference to kick in, the sibling has to be enrolled at the school at the time. So you would be correct.
So I would not have a sibling preference. So then I would come to the board and I would, I could complain. Well, this is, if you're going to allow another school that the child could be out for seven years, why doesn't that apply to a K-8 school? I mean, what's the difference? Yes, that one school is only two years. But, so, I want my child, my second child, to go to the same school that my oldest child went to. But he's been out for two years, and now I'm not allowed that. So to me, there, there is not a consistency in that. Why, if we're going to do that, then why not just have, as it is, I guess, right now, that if you attended, if your sibling attended that school forever, you could have any of your other children attend that school? I do not like the idea of legacy. And B, C, and D all provide for a legacy, in my opinion. I am willing, however, to compromise a bit, I think actually a lot. The transportation issue, which I don't actually, I don't necessarily see that as being a big issue for a large number of parents. Even just this evening, actually, that hasn't been an issue for many parents who've spoken on that. I would be willing to do C, and that is actually, I really feel that that's pushing my limits because it is a legacy. It is. On the other hand, I think that the whole talk of diversity is, I don't know if I want to say it's a moot point because I don't think it's, we can have four draws or whatever. I don't think that it's really going to increase the diversity. I think that the problem is bigger than that. It's a, it's a Santa Rosa problem. But if we're really, if we really want to increase the diversity at this charter school in particular that, that, that we're mostly talking about, have, we should, principals at other schools should be identifying children. Are they doing that? Are they recommending to families? You should go apply at Shrax because you are advanced. I mean, are they doing that? Do, no. And, okay, so why don't we do that? But, but the, 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 the way Santa Rosa is set up, we all know that the lower-income people are on the west side. They're not, part of being poor is the difficulty in getting to the east side, to a school on the east side. So that's why I say it's kind of moot point. I don't think we're going to increase the diversity, no matter what we do, basically, is what I'm saying. 2.3% is pretty bad compared to the rest of the district. Anyway, all right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hanall?
Well, I appreciate all the speakers. And I too want to increase the diversity of our schools. I think the diversity at Shrax reflects the diversity of Rincon Valley Middle School. And so how do you change that? Well, first, we should offer Shrax at a central site or on the west side so that the kids there have that same opportunity. Now, I see, so I, I think that's how you take care of the diversity issue. We open a campus at a, at, at another site. Or we find another site. I think, secondly, I do think sibling preference is, is desirable. I, I, I like, I like option D because it gives four draws to somebody who is low-income. That's huge. So what, what we've got to do, and I'm sure the Williamses have tried to do this, but it's very hard to reach people across town because of transportation issues, especially if you're low-income. So that's why I advocate another, another site. But I do think that, you know, you could have a low-income kid in there, and then if you don't do the sibling preference, then his kid, his brother or sister doesn't get in either. And I think that's a big issue. I think community is very important in school. And I think all those speakers spoke to it, and we've had a ton of email about it. So I think the compromise is D with the, the option D.
Director Carl?
Got a few questions. First, I agree with Director Hanall with respect to the dual immersion charter school only language. I think you guys did a wonderful job of trying to encompass what we were talking about two weeks ago. And as always is the case, when you start writing things, you, you know, other eyes look at it and start saying, "Well, but what if and what if?" And I think that the addition of "or non-native speakers as needed" resolves that. And I think now we have, with that, in my estimation, we've got the dual... we've got the dual immersion charter school language nailed down. So I'm pleased with that. Second, under the lottery procedure, the last paragraph on circle page two says, "In the event an application falls under more than one of the above identified categories, they shall be designated only in the first category in the order in which they appear above." And is that the order in which they appear above in sub B, which is one, free and reduced eligible in district, two, child of current school employees, three, district resident?
Correct.
Okay. Maybe we ought to clean that, we ought to add that? And I think that's, it would be nice to refer specifically to it.
I would suggest a friendly amendment to end that sentence with the phrase, "In the first paragraph of subsection 4B."
That'd be great. Okay? Okay. Next. I was the one that, that had suggested this transportation issue because when you, I mean, we clearly have an issue we have to deal with, which is creating diversity within, or creating the opportunity for diversity within the charter schools. And, and as you try to figure out what are the competing interests, you start thinking in terms of impact relative to families and educational interests and various things like that. And that's why I thought that the transportation thing was a particularly important issue because, you know, if you're having to go to one school over here and one school way over here, I mean, it's just really difficult for students. So I, and I raised that issue. What I'm hearing from a legal perspective is that, that that has some traction and that's something that you feel if we, if we had a claim that we aren't really doing enough here to create diversity, which I think everybody wants to do. If, if that is an exception or something that we use, it's got merit. It has reason. It makes sense. It keeps families together and, and that there seems something to that. There were another suggestion, and there has been a suggestion in a lot of the emails, that loyalty to the, to the school or knowledge of that school's needs and being able to be involved in it is something that's important. I'm curious from e, either of our consultants if you think that has any traction relative to the civil rights aspect of this.
You mean that sense of community?
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, that's, it to some extent is almost getting to that legacy issue. And I'm trying to understand, I mean, if you call it legacy, my guess is that you really lose from a, from a civil rights standpoint.
Oh, sure.
I don't think there's any question. I think that's what you've told us.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
So, so where's that gray line where, where you aren't gonna lose? And if you use the term loyalty and you use the term understanding the community and you, and that kind of thing, does that have any, any, any traction?
Well, I, I definitely feel having and currently working with a lot of charter schools across the state, that most of the charter schools I work with, whether they be charter schools like Shrak's or charter schools that are made up of mostly low-income kids, you have a community. I mean, you develop a community at that school. So, I mean, there definitely is some traction to that in the sense of, you know, you, you want to develop that community. It's, it's harder in a two-year school, I get that. It's harder in a two-year middle school. Just generally, it's hard to, to develop that kind of sense of community. So I do think it's important. I think that you get that, you know, in most schools that you go to, there, there's that sense of community. I think that's important. I do want to point out, however, that, you know, in all of this conversation, we do have to remember that these are charter schools, schools of choice. They're not neighborhood schools, although I understand they're in a neighborhood. But that's not what they were intended to be. They were intended to be schools of choice outside of your, your traditional public schools. So, you know, parents choose to go there. They probably have a neighborhood school that they would go to if they weren't going to charter schools. So it's, you know, it really, it rubs against, it's interesting because you want a sense of community, but it does rub against the intent of charter law that these schools are, are schools of choice and out, that's why there are no boundaries. That's why charter schools have no boundaries, have no enrollment boundaries. So I think that's something that we have to keep in mind, that we're, they're choosing to send their kids to a school that's not their neighborhood school. And so there are limitations to that. The second thing I'd like to say, and I know this isn't part of your question, but I want to throw it in there while I have the mic, is that, you know, I work in Oakland. I work with Oakland Unified. I work with, I work in San Jose, very diverse areas. And I see parents, low-income parents, traveling an hour every day to take their kids to the charter school that has high academic achievement. So I don't know that that's a barrier. I mean, I really, you can, you can look at the numbers. I was just in San Jose the other day and there's, there are kids from the Morgan Hill, which is outside of San Jose, coming into downtown San Jose, whose parents are definitely low-income parents, but they'll make the efforts. Just like you choose to go to a charter school. So someone said earlier, and they're absolutely right, the, the parents who go to charter schools are choosing, they're, they're doing all the legwork. They want something better for their kids. They're choosing that school to go to. And you see that at all, all economic levels.
Okay. From a legal perspective?
Well, you have a, a very unique set of circumstances here. Stephanie says, these are charter schools and public schools and school boards are given fairly broad discretion in crafting the admissions preferences. But it's also well-known in education that admissions preferences tend to have a calcifying effect on demographics. I mean, you really bend the arc, potentially, whether intended or not, of what a school looks like based on, based on the admissions preference as well. So you have this legal and, and moral obligation that your charter schools reflect the, the race and racial and ethnic background of the community, of the population that you're located in. But you also are given kind of a lot of rules that have a lot of gray areas to, to accomplish that. And so I, I think, I think Stephanie is right that yes, you know, community and loyalty are important, important components of a successful school community, both for traditional public schools and charter schools as well. But as Stephanie said, better than I can say, those are attributes that exist at all, all spectrums of the socioeconomic range. I mean, that's not something that's unique to, to any demographic profile. Those are characteristics that exist everywhere.
Okay. And clarify something, Laura, from, from a legal perspective. You said, population of the community in which they're located. I, I want to understand, if a charter school is located in Brinkin Valley and the demographics there are different than the demographics of the district as a whole, which does the law look to?
I, I should be more precise. It's the population of the district in which they're located. And so defines it as the district.
All right. Because I think we've got two issues. I mean, some people have suggested, well, it's in, it's, it's in Brinkin Valley and it, and it meets Brinkin Valley. Well, actually, Shrak's doesn't even meet Brinkin Valley because Brinkin Valley is 22% and, and Shrak's is only 2%. And our district is 60%. Our goal is obviously to reflect the district and that's the requirement, not the community in which it's located.
Correct. Another way of putting it is that the law views a charter school as a virtual school district. Because when you craft your own admissions policies, you are in fact a virtual school district. And so you'll look at the demographics of the charter school as a whole, as if it were a microcosm of the district.
Okay. Can somebody answer? There, there were some questions that were asked by the board and there were people answering in the audience and I don't, because they're not on microphone, I wasn't exactly clear. And if somebody can answer this, perhaps come into the microphone unless it's staff that's here. Did, did I understand correctly that up until this last year, that people who signed up to go to Shrak's were told that, yes, you can come to Shrak's and yes, your sibling, two, five, seven years behind, is gonna be allowed to come to Shrak's as well? Is that, is?
Yes.
Okay. So if we assumed that we were gonna pick an option other than option D, don't you have to grandfather in everybody who, who has been at the school, who's been told something that, and, and now we're in a position where we're changing that?
The, so we have here, someone had asked earlier about the, the prior Shrak's admissions procedure. So we have element H actually from the prior version. And remember, you as a board also made a revision in June of 2013.
Correct. And that's why I said up to a year ago.
Yep. So the way, the way, and it, the, the way it reads is that admissions will be open to all students who familiarize with themselves with the mission statement and first preference will be afforded to siblings of Shrak's students. And then second preference will be given to students living within the boundaries of Santa Rosa City Schools. And then third preference will be given to remaining students residing within the county of Sonoma. Now, so the way that reads, and I'll read it because the, the wording is important. First preference will be allowed, afforded to siblings of Shrak's students. So I read that to mean that at the time of the lottery, if you have a current sibling enrolled, then that's when the sibling preference is.
Yeah, I, we, we, our public comment is, is unfortunately completed, but I'm gonna make your argument. So that's what our policy is. Now, if at a school site, people are told something different, what's our legal responsibility in that regard?
Well...
And I mean, and, and here's, here's the situation. I go to Shrak's and some staff person at Shrak's, you know, I go visit and I think, wow, I really like what's going on here. And my older son is in fourth grade. I want to get him in here. And I'm so convinced that my younger daughter, who's two, I hope to heck she has the opportunity. Oh, well, that's not gonna be a problem because if there's a sibling, you're gonna be able to get in here. Do I have the right to rely on that staff person's representation to me as opposed to what the district policy is?
Well, what would govern is how the, the policy is set forth in the charter. Because that's how, how, that's how the public is told, how it would be, the, the admissions lottery will be conducted. We did, staff did construct element H to make sure that the preferences, the sibling preference, at least as it was expressed in the prior version, carries over. So you'll notice that your four sub options has a sibling preference of some sort, right? Because it contains at least the baseline. We have variations in all of them. But the reason why the sibling preference is actually the first, if you call it priority before you get to the lottery, is because that's the way it existed in the prior version of the Shrak's admissions.
So what you're telling me is that no matter which option I pick, I'm not taking away anything that already has existed from a policy standpoint?
Yes. This has been, there are two ways to look at that. One is that this, obviously, this element H is intended to, to operate on a going-forward basis. So obviously, anyone who's already in the school, that won't affect their status. The, the proposed element H kind of takes the previous one as a baseline and then builds upon it. So...
I understand that. I understand that.
Yeah, it's not intended to break the...
In other words, it hasn't backed up. That doesn't resolve the problem for the person who went to the school and heard something else. And I guess the answer to that is, board policy and, and the charter is what controls. Somebody tells you something else, we can't do anything about that. And there's no legal recourse per se from that standpoint. I understand. Okay. Couple of things that, oh, one more question. I, I appreciate the efforts with respect to item C, but I, I realized when somebody was speaking about the international middle school concept, that's why it was always nice to listen to people when they talk. It, it occurred to me that we have a feeder program that is, that only identifies the high school. So that your situation is, I've got a sixth gator at, at French American Charter. I've decided that the facilities there aren't sufficient. Some aspect of the curriculum isn't sufficient. So my child is not going to go to seventh grade there. Instead, my child's gonna go to its regular school, which is Santa Rosa Middle School. And then I've got a sibling that comes the next year. They're no longer there. And so they don't get in. And it seems to me that, that what we've got to do is we've got to say, the middle school that feeds as well. So that we've got to say on Caesar Chavez that it is Comstock-Piner, on Santa Rosa French American, that it's Santa Rosa Middle, or excuse me, I mean, it's Slater-Montgomery, and on Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts that it's Santa Rosa Middle, Santa Rosa High. So if that is a choice, if that is what somebody wants to make a motion on, I would want to see an amendment to that. And I do appreciate, and I would assume, that when we do the lottery procedure, that we would do the amendment that refers back up to 4B. Two final points. Number one, it is clear that no matter what we do here, we need to increase our efforts, as I think other, other, other board members have said, increase our efforts to encourage people to apply that would otherwise fit within the, the free and reduced lunch, increase the diversity. We can't assume the policy will take care of that. The policy allows for it, but it only works if there are applicants. And the only way to get applicants is to have a procedure, policy, program, something that encourages it. And whether it's encouraging principals and teachers to identify kids who might consider various programs in the district. Because it's not just our charter schools. We've got some incredible programs in the public schools. And, and I would hope that teachers, when they identify particular attributes of, of students, would say, you know, you really ought to consider going over to Piner because of your scientific background and interest in GPS system and all the other stuff. You ought to consider doing that. And I don't know that we promote that in any fashion. But as it relates to certainly increasing diversity within the charter schools, we cannot sit on the laurels of whatever policy we do here. We've got to develop a program that, that, that encourages more applicants. Second point. We need to, we need to seriously look at replication of programs that have high demand. And, and it may be, it may be that you can't clone the Williamses. And that program works because of the two of them. And, and that may be the answer. I, I don't know that. But that isn't what Steve tells me. But Steve is also a heck of a salesman. I would buy ice from him in Alaska. But, but when we've got that demand, and Stephanie talked about it, I think it's an important thing, these are schools of choice. When in fact, there is that, that choice being made by so many people, then we need to be looking at, at other ways to accomplish that. And, and I would hope we would engage the Williamses in, in some brainstorming about that and we would consider within the structure here what that is. Arts, the Arts Charter is not a function of the program as much as it's a function of space. And we have a way to resolve that, which we'll have to look at it. And the language ones have potential space issues, but we've got ways to potentially look at that, the international middle school, et cetera. This is the one that has such high demand that we need to look at what other ways exist on that. So, thank you.
Director Shields, you want to make a comment?
Superintendent Shields.
Oh, Superintendent Shields. Excuse me.
Yeah. I, I just want to make two clarifying points. Cause I want to make sure I'm hearing correctly for, because I hear some presuppositions that, that slightly trouble me. One, the clarification that replicating a program does not change the diversity of individual sites. So I think we need to be clear that even if we create programs in other locations, it's not addressing the fundamental issue of diversity at, at any one particular site.
And I, I wasn't saying that.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying it for out loud, just because I, because you weren't actually the only person to mention that.
Thank you.
Director Carl? The second is the idea that, and just to consider, also the idea of increasing other people to, or encouraging other people to apply for the program, which I think is a fine idea. But I think in some ways, people might hear and, and misunderstand, parents of gifted children might feel like they're being well-served at the school they're at. So it might not be that they don't feel their child is gifted... So it might not be that they don't feel their child is gifted or would be flowering and blossoming in a program that did that. They might just feel that it's done at their neighborhood school, at their neighborhood public school, or a different charter school. So I want to be clear that as we say to encourage other people to apply, if there's someone at, and I think, Director Kyle, it might have been you, you said Biella, and they want to encourage them to go to another site, there might be lots of teachers at Biella who feel that gifted children and parents and, and children themselves are well-served where they're at. So I do want to make that clarification, not that, not that the Williams don't have a fabulous program, but those things are true as well, but, and I'm done, thank you.
Director, Director Hanle, you want to make another comment?
Well, I wanted to really clarify about the sibling issue. If you look at Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter, there are 64 spots. 16 siblings took up those spots. Now you've got all the rest of them. By letting the siblings in, you're not decreasing the diversity. How many low-income people do we have that are applying to the school? Our job is to spread the word as to what the school's all about. That's how you get them in. Eliminating sibling priority isn't going to do that. All it's going to do is make people upset because their brother and sister can't get in. So I don't see that as any solution. And true, you're not going to solve the diversity in Rincon Valley by opening up a school somewhere else, but you would have greater diversity because usually, as we know from what's happening in Santa Rosa, its neighborhoods are somewhat reflective of the schools. Okay, so that, that's my point. And then I would also entertain the amendment of students who matriculated, if somebody wants to make that amendment. Or maybe I'll make it, I don't know where we are on this. So I'll hand it back to Donna.
Well, talking about not knowing where we are with this, I just need clarification one more time. So, we're trying to make this so that all charter schools are going to be equal in terms of their, who can, who can attend and when they can attend. But I need clarification on, so I think Laura asked the question, if my student graduates out of the, out of the charter school, any one of them, and moves on to now 10th grade, and now I have a kindergartner coming in, is that child considered a sibling at that point?
The way D reads, now, no, because the, the child has to be currently enrolled.
Okay, okay. So I'm very uncomfortable with this entire thing, as everyone already knows, because of how I voted the last time. But I also have raised children and understand that there is a lot to be said for a sense of community, although I believe you can, you can develop a sense of community at any school you're in because we moved three times in six years and my children were forced to do that. And it was, they all, they lived to tell the story, they're fine. But I don't mean to be flippant, I do know this is very, very important to people and to families. And on the other hand, I made a comment at our last meeting that parents would drive anywhere to get their students to where they feel they'll get the best education. And Ms. Farland has confirmed what I said through her work, what she, what she has observed through her work. I think what we're really lacking here is the, is reaching out to other students and their parents and say, and letting them know that there, there's this program across town. Or there's this program over at, on the Rincon Valley Middle School campus. That's, that's our fault, because we all know that there are very exceptional children all across this city. And we need to reach out to those students. But we also have the problem of our, our schools compete against each other. And if we're really going to be serious about this, about this marketing of this program, and not building it someplace else, but first marketing it, as I know the Williamses have suggested time and time again, just to give them credit where credit is due, we have to stop this competing for, for placement of the, who's going to get the biggest, the brightest children? Who are going to get, how can I get that, that group out, out to Santa Rosa Middle School? How can I get them, keep them there? Because I need them for my test scores. And as a board member, I've played into this too, because we have all been encouraging, you know, do the best we can and no child left behind. So we're talking about a real shift here in how we're going to think. I'd also like to say that it's not easy to go and replicate a school and just put a school up and, and say, okay, now we're going to have one here, we're going to have one there. It takes, it takes resources, it takes staff time, it takes, we, we have campuses that are busting at the seams and we have campuses that have plenty of room. And people tend to go where they, where they want to go. So I, I don't think it's as easy as, well, we'll just put the school there and everybody, and everybody will go. There are so many, there are so many ifs here that it's worrisome to me. It's worrisome to me that we have created a, a group of charter schools that seem to have more and more demands all the time because their parents are so actively involved and do, and, and want what's best for their children, as every parent does. And we can't meet all of those demands. So that's something to, for us to consider too here, is what exactly are we creating? What, what kind of precedent are we, are we setting here? If, if I were going to choose any of these, and I'm really not, I'm really not comfortable with this, but I do like the idea of, of having then the option of a sit, for each sibling over the lottery, then, after lottery, then we go to for free and reduced lunch. And as has been pointed out to me here today, then they become part of the fabric of the school community. And so it begins. So I have to say this is just one of the most difficult topics that we've had to address here because it, there's no clear choice for me and there's nothing that makes me feel completely comfortable. Even with, I thought I was completely comfortable with, you have a child on the campus, another child coming up, fine. But after listening to the comments tonight and, and two weeks ago, I realized it isn't that clear-cut. I just think we have to be very, very careful how we go about this and we have to be very diligent in our efforts to create more diversity at this school and at any of the charters that we create, because they are schools of choice. So we have to make everybody aware that the choice is there. And I don't know what parent doesn't want that choice for their child. And will do whatever they can to better their child's education and therefore their life. So that, that's my comment, I think, unless I hear from other board members. Director Kristoff.
Thanks for the comments from my fellow board members and thanks for staff and for our people coming up and helping us out and for the parents who spoke tonight and the people who are concerned about the charter schools. This is, to me, a tremendously complex issue that, you know, probably out in my term on the board, I'm just going, I do believe we're on the cutting edge in the sense, as Stephanie said, we are really examining something I think that has been ignored by the state for a long time. And I don't think any of these options for me are a solution, and I believe I'm hearing that from my other board members as well. I hope that we will have an opportunity to talk and, and to find ways together to increase diversity in the, in the community we live in with the sense of giving that we have. I think it's very, you know, it's incumbent upon this board to take the lead and say, you know, let's work together with our charter schools to find a better way to bring people in. Part of it's our responsibility, maybe we can find people who want to go to these schools. Maybe we can encourage them and give them the extra resources, maybe they need to get there. And we don't want to just put a kid in a school and just say, hey, now you're here, you're, you're economically disadvantaged now and you're a great school. We know they're going to need support. We know that they're going to need more resources and that, now, our goal should be not only to, to bring diversity to our schools, but to make sure that these children succeed. And so I look at this as, you know, there, there, none of these, none of these choices here for me is a solution. I agree with the comments from a few of my fellow board members up here. We need to move on, but I think the idea for me is, we need to have a real, open, honest discussion with all of our charters. We need to make sure we're meeting the needs of the law, but at the same time, I think we have a moral, you know, obligation to, 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 to help our community. I would say that, as I mentioned, I am a very strong supporter of community schools, but as Stephanie pointed out, this is something different. This is not quite a neighborhood school. And I would hope that in the spirit of, you know, of really making diversity, you know, a very, very important priority for us, that we can all work together. And I would like to see the board, our board, take the lead in this, but the charters that we work with, to have maybe a closer conversation and dialogue about how to do this. I don't have a solution, I wish I did. But, you know, we look at a country, the country we live in now, and the ideals that we have and how, how strongly we feel about Martin Luther King and the end of de Jure segregation. But in fact, you know, we are more segregated as a society than we have ever been, at least in the last 100 years since the, you know, the, you know, the, the end of the civil, excuse me, the end of, the end of the Jim Crow era. But at the same time, we have this growing inequity in our society that is well documented by many people. And when you, you look at what's going on, you know, people, people live where they can afford to live, and the opportunities are, are minimal for some people. And, you know, if we wait for the federal government to do something about it or the state government, we may be waiting a long time. I think it starts with the community, and I think we've got a great board and I think we've got a very good community, and I think we're the people to, to march down the line and say, we can do this. You know, so I, I encourage us to, you know, use this as a stopping point or a starting point to look for, you know, a solution or solutions down the line, but it's going to take a while. Thank you.
So I need a motion? Director Hanle.
I move Option D with the following friendly amendments.
There actually is an amendment to your motion.
So you can just move it? You're right. I move, also that, good point. We add the words, or non-native speakers, as you suggested, or as I suggested, and that we add the words, "students who matriculated." And there was another one, but I don't remember what it is, so that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. And we have to, you've got to have either a second or it dies.
Well, I don't think it's clear because we're not saying what we're adding.
I totally, I totally agree with you.
We're adding the, the language too. So I think it would be helpful if we could go to each subsection, identify the subsection, add the language, to move on to the next subsection.
Okay, so the first motion then would be the language, which would add, for dual immersion charter schools only, you add, "or non-native speakers."
Second.
Okay.
And what, do I have to approve each, go through this now? Or what do we?
Do we need to vote?
We, we have, we have a couple of different options. One of the options is our dual immersion, and he's just picked out one of those options and, and we've got to vote on that one.
Okay.
Then we're going to have to go back to the A, B, C, D, and the language that runs on.
Okay, so that was moved by Director Hanle, seconded by Director Carl.
Director Hanle?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
President Jay?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
But you can't, you can't talk.
Okay, Larry, you ready?
Okay, the other motion is to add the words, "students who matriculated." Now where is, where is that on my?
Sorry.
That it would be in C, right? Or wait a minute.
It's subsection D.
Can you help me with it? Yes.
Yes, please, please do make a suggestion.
Friendly amendment, you're correct that the first one would be to replace the word "enrolled" in the third line with the word "matriculated." And to also make the clarification that I identified earlier. So that would, the current title of D, the underlying text, "for all dependent charter schools serving fewer than nine grade level, grade levels, i.e. less than K-8," I would recommend that the friendly amendment would be to take that phrase, put commas before and after it, and insert it in line three between the words "or" and "who." And I'll, I'll read what it would, how it would read. So I would start with the existing line two, "all siblings of students enrolled at and attending the charter school at the time of the lottery, comma, or, comma, for all dependent charter schools serving fewer than nine grade levels, parentheses, i.e. less than K-8, comma, who were enrolled at the school at any time during the seven school years prior to the school year for which the lottery is being conducted shall be admitted, period."
Except you missed "matriculated."
I'm sorry, "matriculated," that's correct.
Matriculated, yeah. So moved, thank you.
Second.
Okay, can I have a friendly amendment? And that is that at the bottom of the lottery procedure, since we are dealing with D, that we include the language at the end of the sentence, "in the event that an applicant falls under the more than, more than one of the above identified categories, they shall designate only in the first category in the order in which they appear above in paragraph That was council's suggestion to my concern that there was, that we weren't really clear about that.
So, so do we need, so we need, you're making a friendly amendment?
Correct, motion and second are has to approve.
Okay.
I didn't quite follow that one. Where, where is?
Looking at the bottom of page two.
Thank you.
At the sentence that reads, "in the event that an applicant falls under more than one of the above identified categories, they shall be designated only in the first category in the order in which they appear above," and then I think Director Carl is proposing, "in the order in which they appear above in the first paragraph of subsection 4B." Is that correct?
That's fine.
Okay, that works?
He's taking this.
Yeah.
He's going to be right.
Okay.
Am I right with you?
Yes, I second that.
And if I could just make a procedural reminder that embedded in D is also increasing the draws for free and reduced from four to two, from two to four.
Thank you.
Right.
So that was moved by Director Hanle, seconded by Director Close. Director Hanle?
Can I, can I speak to the motion?
Yes.
I'm glad you added that because it actually is under draw number one to be considered in conjunction with, and so we want to be very clear that that motion does that. I'm convinced that what this does, especially given the numbers that we've had, is it gets us a lot faster to diversity in the, in the manner in which we have created this, as long as, as Director Kristoff have said, and many others have said, that we engage in programs to increase the applicants. So I think, I think staff has done a fabulous job, it's been a very difficult process to go through. I appreciate all your patience and, and, you know, we've got consultants that have helped, but we have our own staff as well that has been working very much on that, and I appreciate those efforts, thank you.
Okay, so where are we now?
Roll call, move.
Roll call. Director Hanle?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
No.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
President Jay?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
I think we're done.
Motion passes and we're done. Thank you. All have a good night.
All have a good night.
I think we have to.